Court will come to order. It is Monday, June the 27th, 9:00 in the morning, and the Kerr County Commissioners Court is now in session. If you would, please stand for the prayer and pledge which will be led by Commissioner Letts.
Bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we're so thankful that you're a part of our lives, that you live in our hearts and you help guide us. Even though we fail many times, we do appreciate the guidance you give us. We ask that you help guide this court today as we make our deliberations. We believe we have a chance to reign today. We hope that you bless our lands with that. We are in severe drought. These things we ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Ask everyone to please turn your phones to vibrate or off so we don't interrupt the First item on the agenda is always public input. We have several people who submitted a request. And just to remind everyone, these would be for topics that are not on the agenda. If it's on the agenda, we ask that you wait until the agenda item is called. So with that, Terry Hall?
Good morning, y'all. This is Terry Hall, Independence Lane, representing We The People, Liberty in Action. And we're wanting to just come before the court today about the property tax rate and the budget process. Obviously, property taxes are just too high. They're unsustainably high. And we appreciate your no new revenue budget. But to actually get relief, it would require lowering our tax rate because obviously that rises every year with the appraisals. But at this time, the reason why we're not coming to the court asking for that is because we want to focus on our sheriff's deputies and their salaries. The proposed COSA for them is the 3% when inflation is approaching 10%. Food in just a month of May went up 10%. Between gas and food and all of these other conflating events, I feel like we're asking so much of our sheriff's deputies at this time. Just caught the seven in the sex trafficking ring. How many drug busts have we seen from our sheriffs? The massive problem with illegals and all the bailouts in the hinterlands of the county and all these ranches. You have the fallout from Uvalde that they're being asked to pick up some slack. And now the Ingram Police Department and all the instability over there, asking them to have to cover Wes Kerr. So we feel like we need to have competitive salaries for our sheriff's deputies. They know they can make more going to Kerrville Police Department, our surrounding counties, they can make more. And while our retirement package might be awesome, how are these young families going to get through this crisis if they don't have what they need to provide for their own families? And what we would hate to see is the Kerr County Sheriff's Department turn into what's happening over in Ingram Police Department where we can't keep the positions filled at a time when we're asking the most from them. So we're asking you to make those tough adjustments to the budget to try and increase some of those salaries for them and still keep your no new revenue budget. Because otherwise, we would be asking for across the board tax relief and lowering the tax rates if we could actually feel some of that tax relief. So with that, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. William Fitch?
Good morning. William Fitch, I live at 403 Forest Ridge Drive here in Kerrville. Mine's very simple. The sheriff is the chief law enforcement officer of our county. Nobody outranks him. And his deputies support him. And we need them to stick around. And the only way for them to stick around is if they are being paid competitively. So I echo what Ms. Hall said. We need a raise for our sheriff's deputies. And I ask that you consider that strongly. Again, he's the top dog. Thank you.
Thank you. Janice Riley?
Good morning. Janice Riley, I live in precinct three out in Center Point plus the county line. And as a wife or retired state trooper from Maryland, this is a topic near and dear to my heart. And I can tell you, there's a lot of law enforcement that because of the lack of competitive salaries, they end up having to look for second jobs or family members, spouses have to look for second jobs. And so if we talk about law enforcement being out, working full-time, if not overtime, and then working a second job, then they're not getting the rest they need to be sharp and coherent and do their best when they're out defending our county. And additionally, there is so much activity, Uvalde and the trafficking and what's going on with the border was brought up. We also need to look at additional positions and also putting into the budget, looking at the idea of training. Because things are changing and there's much adapting and adjustment needing. And if we have competitive salaries to make sure that we keep the gentlemen and women in their positions, then also have the funding to be able to have them trained on the latest technologies and advances and tactics that are out there as well. So that's my piece to share with you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Those are all the applications I have piled. So with that, we'll move on to Commissioners' comments. Precinct one, same old story, rain. Had fires lately, you know? It's very dry out there. I'm trying to remind everybody that even if you live in a rock house, you have wood trim. And it's just as dry as a bone right now, so please be careful.
I have calls complaining that we have restrictions against fireworks, but we have fireworks stands open. I assume they have limitations on them, but please be careful if you do use them.
Agree.
I did my part for the rain. I washed my truck yesterday, and that's a very rare occurrence.
I just finished building a cabinet and left it on the patio.
Well, again, you know, we all know that we need rain and it's critical stages right now. I did go into Thomas Jeffers, his church's fireworks stand the other day and visited with them and asked them to ask people to be very cautious. And he said that they were doing that, and he said, "I've even had moms say, 'No, we can't get that. It's too dry out there.'" You know, so people are using a little bit of common sense. So that's it.
Well, just to follow up, I think we're piling on here. That fireworks coming up for the fourth. I think most of you know that I'm a former civil trial lawyer and spent most of my career trying a lot of lawsuits in the hundreds. And I just want to remind people that there could be civil liability if you start a fire on somebody else's property. The restrictions that we have are no fins with missiles with fins or rockets on sticks. And that's to try to get them out of the air. But even with sparks flying and everything, you get, we're having these warm winds in the evening that are very dangerous. And I want to remind people that, we were just talking about the sheriff's office. The sheriff is the top law enforcement officer, and he answers to a requirement of having to prove by beyond a reasonable doubt, which is a very heavy burden. You got to be 95% certain something happened before you're going to find somebody guilty. Civil liability is not based upon beyond a reasonable doubt. It's a preponderance of the evidence. And what that means simply is if you just visualize the scales of justice, the complaining party has to put on enough evidence to tip those scales slightly, just any. Preponderance of the evidence is 51%. And believe it or not, in my career, I had a 51% case that I actually tried. But that's not a very heavy burden if you think about it. And so, and the public doesn't know, and I'm sharing with you now, that I have been approached by citizens that are concerned suggesting that I declare a state of disaster, which I have the ability to do. It's only good for 60 hours. I've worked this out with my county attorney. It's only good for 60 hours before the governor has to review it. But we could declare a state of disaster to stop the fireworks. I'm choosing not to do that. And I've communicated to the court that if we were going to do it, I would want to have a solid support of the court. I really don't like messing with people's rights. You've got the right to do the fireworks, but do it responsibly. And that's why I'm emphasizing the potential liability here. Water your yard if you're going to do it. Tell your neighbors. Let them water their yards. Water their roofs, maybe. I mean, seriously, it's very dangerous out there. And it wouldn't take much evidence to show somebody not being responsible. And that standard is what a reasonably prudent person would do under the same or similar circumstances. Now, what is the responsible thing to do here? If you're going to do fireworks, take precautions, document it so that you've got some evidence if you get sued as precautions that you took. And so that's just out there as, I get to get on my professional soapbox one last time as a lawyer and just tell you, be careful out there. It's dangerous. So with that, we're going to shift into the Historical Commission. We'll go down to item 1.1, which is a report from the Kerr County Historical Commission regarding the summer history camp. Ms. Bond?
Good morning. Attached to your agenda, if you have a complete agenda, is a two-page report on history camp. And I want to thank the Commissioners' Court as well as a lot of different county employees because the auditor, the attorney, maintenance, the court coordinator, human resources, we have a lot of support help from the county as well as the Commissioners' Court. And I just want to say thank you for that. It's deeply appreciated because we know how hard you all work. The chair of the Historical Commission is here this morning, Julie Mosty Leonard. And I just wanted to say we had a successful camp. We had 19 children. We have an upper limit of 20 because Commissioner Ballou had asked me, could we take more children? And the answer is no, partly because of how many children can be contained and do activities within the Union Church Building because we try to maintain a really good adult-to-child ratio. These were children who completed the third grade and the fourth grade. And when you get volunteers in there, like on Wednesday, we had 13 volunteers in there with daughters of the Republic of Texas and five learning stations and 19 children rotating. And there's not much room left in the Union Church Building. So I just wanted to say, all 19 children, with the exception of three children who had to miss one day each, it's really a compliment to us that they all showed up every day, okay? And to all the volunteers because this camp could not be put on. And I think we may be one of the few counties in the state of Texas that has initiated camp like this. So I'm very proud of all of the staff who volunteered. And if you read on down, you'll see a list of the staff people who were there every day and a list of all the activities we did. And then on the next page, there is a list of all of the volunteers who were there. And these people were sharing with us their experience, their knowledge, and their skill. And I had parents tell me, hey, I'm learning things. My kid came home and told me some things I did not know. And a person in the community told me Friday evening in event that a grandmother was at Riverside Nature Center and was saying, "Thank God for the history camp. It was a great experience for my granddaughter." So I want you to know that this is a very valuable thing that I think we do and we appreciate everything that the county does to help us. I do want to give a shout out to not only the schools in the area, both private and public, who helped us distribute flyers this year. And you can see at the top of page one what our distribution was of schools that children attend in the county. We had one child from Abilene, but her grandmother lives here and her mother was raised in Kerr County. And so I want to say thank you to Buzz's Barbecue who provided chili for us free of charge for lunch for the children on Friday. And even though it was a bit on the spicy side, I want to tell them those kids went back for second bowls. I was really shocked once I took my first bite. I was like, oh my. So I also want to say thank you to SoVest Printing because even though we pay them for what they do, they have endless patience with me about all of the printing needs that we have to do. Julie, did you hear anything?
Well, I ran into one of our campers at Walmart, and he passed by me. And I said, "Well, we missed the history camp. We got this stricken one." And then finally, he met, he reached over and just grabbed me and gave me this big hug. And his mother said, "He misses that so much." And she said, "He's coming back next year, but he may be too old." But that was an amazing experience.
As just a final comment, I do want to tell you that we did buy event insurance for the five days, the five mornings. But event insurance now for youth day camps is getting, Judge Kelly's laughing, it's getting more difficult to come by. And so there was an animal exclusion, despite my desire to have a horse, a sheep, and a goat there one day. I have no idea how much it would have cost us to have been able to have animals there. So that is, was kind of a disappointment this year, but the insurance agent went into great detail with me, and I read everything that he sent. So I know that it is a difficult thing to do. I also want to thank, one parent donated a scholarship, and it was used. And another member of the commission donated two scholarships, and they were both used. So I want you to know that we do reach out to the community in that way, too. So thank you very much for your time.
Well, and Ms. Bond, and Ms. Mosty both, I want you to know that the county's very proud of what you do on the commission. And we're very proud to have a Historical Commission's summer camp because we are Camp County in Texas, if you know. Think about it. We are the leading county for camps. So what you're doing is very important to us, and you are appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 1.2 is to consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to approve a contract with Xerox for the copier for the 216th District Attorney's Office. Ms. Flores?
Our contract for the Xerox is in our office. The contract is up July 5th. Xerox sent us a new contract, a four-year contract, and the price has actually gone down, $168 annually. And I'll save over four years, about $672. So we are hoping that it'll get signed.
Got approval. Second?
Got a motion and a second to approve the Xerox contract with 216th District Attorney's Office. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 1.3, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to approve the contract for assessment and collection services between Kerr County and Center Point Independent School District. Mr. Reeves?
Good morning, gentlemen. Before you, is an updated contract which was drafted and approved by the Kerr County Attorney, authorizing my office to assess and collect property taxes for the Center Point Independent School District. This new contract reflects various changes in terminology as a result of the 86th and 87th legislative sessions. It's respectfully requested that the court approve the contract and authorize the county judge to sign the same.
I move for approval.
Got a motion and a second to approve the assessment and collection services contract between Kerr County and Center Point ISD. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Item 1.4, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to approve the contract for assessment and collection services between Kerr County and the Kerr County Emergency Services District Number Three. Mr. Reeves?
Yes, Sir Judge, as you know, the Kerr County ESD Number Three was approved by the voters on November 2nd, 2021. The contract before you was drafted and approved by the Kerr County Attorney, authorizing my office to collect property taxes, assess property taxes for the district. I respectfully request that the court approve the contract and authorize the judge to sign.
I move for approval.
Second? Got a motion and a second to approve the assessment and collection services contract between Kerr County and ESD Number Three. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Item 1.5, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to approve a recommendation from the selection committee to hire Grant Works for administrative services related to the hazard mitigation assistance grant program. Ms. Budd?
Good morning. The selection review committee did meet and went on ahead and did a scoring committee, although we only had one submission for the RFP, which was Grant Works, which we have years of experience with. And they did write our previous hazard mitigation grant five years ago. So it is upon their recommendation that we ask that you approve Grant Works as the administrative services for the hazard mitigation grant.
I move for approval.
Got a motion and a second to approve the hazard mitigation assistance grant with Grant Works, to hire Grant Works. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Thank you. Item 1.7 is to consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to reappoint Greg Longenbauer to the Kerr County 911 Board.
We have one more here.
Oh, Ms. Puzz got one more. Sorry. Consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to approve the local hazard mitigation planning services contract with Grant Works and to provide administrative services related to the hazard mitigation assistance grant program.
Yes, we have gone ahead and gotten the contract from Grant Works for the hazard mitigation grant application. It has been reviewed by the county attorney, and we'd like that to pass to go ahead and start the process.
I move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 1.7 now. Consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to reappoint Greg, is it Longenbauer? To the Kerr County 911 Board. Mr. Ballou?
He wants to stay on the boards. Mark Del Toro would like him to stay on the board, so I thought it'd be a slam dunk deal.
How many's on that board? Five?
I think, I think it is. I don't remember.
We appointed one.
Yeah.
We have one more, too.
So I move for approval. Second?
Got a motion and a second to approve Greg, to reappoint Greg Longenbauer to the Kerr 911 Board. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Item 1.8, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to approve the revised job descriptions within the Animal Services Department. Ms. Dawson and Mr. Gibbons?
Good morning. If I may, before Jennifer does her part, I want to just give a quick, brief explanation as to what we're doing here. I think everybody's aware right now that we're moving towards the solid waste division of environmental health, moving from the courthouse over to the animal shelter because we did purchase a office building, which is being finished out right now. In doing that, we are going to be losing kind of an unofficial administrative assistant. The administrative assistant for the OSSF Division of Environmental Health still answers all of our phone calls, and it does a lot of things for us. When we move, we're going to be moving away from her and that, signing that department. So what I'm looking at doing is something that probably should have been done years ago, but now it's just become absolutely necessary, and it's moving the administrative assistant, basically to be a straight administrative assistant, not having them work the front desk at the shelter because that is just very taxing on them. It's hard to, it's hard to be efficient and timely with things like monthly reports and just a whole lot of things. But basically, what I'm looking at is moving her from that position to be a strictly administrative assistant, which there's plenty I'll be able to have them doing all day long. But then redesignating one of our existing kennel tech positions into a receptionist position, somebody that will full-time work at the front desk. And by the front desk, I mean the first person everybody sees when they come into the facility, the person that's mostly answering the phone, dispatching calls, doing all that type of thing. That's what I need somebody to be doing, and an administrative assistant that can do a better job. And it's not any fault of theirs. It's just the nature of the position, working at that desk, you're just very busy. So basically, I'm looking at redesignating an existing position into a receptionist and moving the administrative assistant out of the front so that they can assist with the solid waste and everything else. So that's, if you all have any questions about ideas.
Right, and there's no budget impact on this switch?
No, sir.
No change of job title?
There is a change in job title. Basically, one of the full-time kennel tech positions will go, will be, will be redesignated with a new job description and a new job title of receptionist. Didn't know what else to call it, but basically that's what they are, the first person they see when they come through the front door. So it's basically a redesignation of one position. The other person will still, the administrative assistant will still be doing all the same things. Also, whenever somebody's out sick or on vacation, you know, they'll be going back to the front to work that. But for day-to-day operations, I really need some more administrative assistant type of help. And it's, I've needed it for a while, but it's actually about to get even more so because we're, like I said, we're basically losing somebody that answers the phones and does some of that stuff for us that's not even a member of our department. That's basically what that means.
Does that put you short, Hannah, with kennel techs?
Yes, Sir. That, well, we have two part-time kennel tech positions currently and two full-time kennel tech positions. I'm looking at moving one of the full-time. It's a need, yes, but I'm trying to look at the greater need right now, and that's to make that, to make this move. And, and that's to make that, to make this move.
Dawson.
So the job descriptions that we're wanting to approve today are of the Animal Services Administrative Assistant Position as well as Animal Services Receptionist Position. They have both been updated.
These stuff, are the grades are the same as any?
Correct.
I move for approval.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve the revised job descriptions within the Animal Services Department. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. 1.9, consider, discuss and take appropriate action to approve the market adjustment increase policy for the airport and District Attorney's Offices. Ms. Dawson.
Yes, Sir. I brought this before you two weeks ago and you wanted me to attach dollars to the actual market adjustments for those departments. And what I provided has those in the attachment.
A little background on this, these are both departments that have never, have not been on the stuffing grade system. We've talked about it before and the idea is to get them moved on to it. We're telling you, I think now, it's a budget for next year. It's nothing changed this year's budget. It'll be incorporated into the budget, but just for us to be able to approve it so that it can go into the budget for next year.
Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand.
I have a motion.
Oh, you have a motion. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Now we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I do have a question. Jennifer, has it been resolved exactly as to how timing-wise they're going to get incorporated in? You and I have talked about this some and...
Yeah, it will occur on their anniversary, their first anniversary in this next year because all of them have been employed more than a year. So they've already, would have received it based on the current policy. So if their anniversary falls in December, they'll get it, you know, twenty-five pays for next year. If it falls in May, they'll have to wait till May.
But if they've already...
Right. I mean, I would love to start them as of ten-one, but...
I guess the question is, you know, I just, I don't know that it's fair to give them, and this could remove it into policy, the one-year automatic increase, two-and-a-half percent increase. I mean, these employees, their salaries have been adjusted by their respective departments along the way. And I think, my personal opinion is that it should be, skip the one year and then go to the four, what do we have, four years now, every four years you get an adjustment?
So do we, do we use their hire date? Because their, their hire dates, you know, vary greatly. So, I mean, one year from their hire date, which will already have them receiving one, or one year from their hire date in FY23? And in one situation, we had an employee who worked for a different department within the county who received steps. She transferred into this department and now she does not receive steps.
Well, I'm not of a problem with just the one-year as part of our policy.
Because it's short of a year?
Well, no, because they've been employees of the county for over a year.
Yeah.
And, you know, the one employee that transferred, at some point in her career, she got a one-step increase. The others that didn't, their salaries were adjusted based on what their department heads wanted. So they're kind of, to me, they shouldn't get the first one-year increase. It ought to go with every four-year.
Thanks.
If you want to amend your motion, I'll say.
That's kind of a discussion point.
Who is it?
So four years.
I want to be, I want to be fair to the employees, but I don't want to, I'm not sure it's fair to give them a one, you know, two-and-a-half percent increase after one year and then, then roll them into this system. Maybe that is a fair way to do it. I don't know.
There's always that last one in the gate kind of thing. And if you, if you try to give everybody a trophy, it doesn't always work out very well. Not everybody's... In this particular scenario, there's going to be several people that aren't, aren't happy. So you just do what you got to do to keep it simple in the future. That's my...
And so that the public understands what we're dealing with here. These are ongoing employees of county and have been for, in some cases, many years. Long since the one-year anniversary from their hiring. And so that's, that's what is problematic about this is because they're already employees and they're long since, most of them, at least the one, did get the one-year adjustment.
And others were adjusted by the department and...
Especially this past year with the salary study.
So, I mean, I'm all in favor of getting on the seventh grade. I think we should have all of our, I think it's a whole lot simpler to get on the seventh grade system. It's just whether they should get that first year. And I don't know how you, when you start the four-year, when you start the clock running.
We have employees that started in 2016, 2015, 2018, 2019. So it's all over the place. So would it be the four years from their hire date? And in some cases, they've already passed the four years.
We can't, we can't go backwards.
So four years from ten-one anniversary date, starting now? I just need a...
Well, I don't think it's legal for us to go backwards, no.
Well, you can go backwards to count their hire date, to go forwards, to get them on the four, seven, ten schedule.
I think you have to use the hire date. Otherwise, it gets, they're treated differently than all other employees. So you use the hire date. I don't think you'd go to their hire date, just do, then then go to a four-year, get it on a, on that four-year cycle.
Three-year cycle.
The three-year.
Yeah. So get them on the, whatever they're closest to, their next anniversary date, which is, hits four, seven, ten, thirteen, et cetera.
That's what I think is fair.
So we go back to hire date?
Start calculating.
As though they were on the grading step at the time.
Right.
And then they just fall into whatever year they are.
Right. Which will change the math.
If you get one hired in fifteen, then they're going to be at year seven, right?
Well, twenty, they would have hit their, their next step in twenty-two. So the next one wouldn't be till twenty-five.
There it is.
Hire date and trigger date.
Right. That sound good to you, county attorney?
It's fair.
Your motion is amended, Gordon?
Yes.
My second, sir.
Discussion.
I have one question.
Well, because fairness is complicated because it's a man-made concept. And so that's all I'm going to say about the fairness part.
Well, we know somebody's going to be unhappy. But we're trying to do this as fairly as we can.
And the employee that would have received their step, they're just going to have to wait another three years.
Okay. Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous with the sign.
Thank you.
Okay, item 1.10, consider, discuss and take appropriate action to approve the mutual agreement document between OUR, which is Operation Underground Railroad, Domestic Law Enforcement, and Kirk County Sheriff's Office, along with a donation in the amount of twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and fifty cents for payment of a yearly contract with Gray Shift LLC for the Gray Key Package. Sheriff Lee.
Yes. Judge and Court, I'm looking for y'all's approval to be able to accept this mutual agreement between Kirk County Sheriff's Office and OUR, which is Operation Underground Railroad. A little quick brief on that is, basically, this is a service that we currently use to the Secret Service. One of our task force officers is able to use this on Friday mornings from nine to eleven because a lot of people have a demand. This, I don't want to get in a lot of detail because investigative reasons, but it's basically a service to be able to get iPhones where they're locked. It's very hard to do. And a little bit about OUR, I'll read you a quick sentence here. OUR is a nonprofit organization that exists to protect children from sex trafficking and sexual exploitation. A mission best accomplished through collaboration with law enforcement agencies. OUR kind of reached out to us because we've been making a lot of cases. We're actually the only agency that has a forensic unit between San Antonio and El Paso. So because of this service, they're wanting to donate this service. That would be purchasing, county won't be out nothing. It's twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and fifty cents. That's for one year. What, what Gray Key does have is they have an internal grant system that'll help us in writing grants for extended purposes from year one. And if we lose it, that's fine, we go back to the Secret Service, but we're allowed like two hours a week to be able to download these phones. And being able to download them here, we'll be able to make more cases quicker and get them to the District Attorney for Prosecution. Heather has reviewed this, had no problems with it, so I'm just looking for y'all's approval to be able to accept this, enter this mutual agreement.
I move for approval.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve the OUR, Operation Underground Railroad, Domestic Law Enforcement, contract with the sheriff's office and accept a donation in the amount of twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and fifty cents. And this pertains particularly to iPhones.
Yes, yeah, that's, yes.
Those, you don't know it. Their iPhones are very problematic for law enforcement. Very difficult.
It's a very good service.
Any discussion?
I have a question. Being as, as Kirk County is the only place, as you said, in our region, basically...
Yeah, yeah, for, we have a forensic lab. Yes. Everything's expensive.
How often does somebody come to you from another county wanting to use that?
Oh, regular. I can't say daily, weekly, definitely. Even DPS, even some of the feds come to us. You know, we're just real fortunate to be able to have. Now, this service here, we don't currently have here. Gray Key, we have it at the Secret Service. Like I say, we get it to our window, which you can only do so many phones. But we'll have that ability here. I want y'all to approve this to be able to do it here. So I look for more people to come here to be able to use it. It's very valuable.
Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item 1.11, consider, discuss and take appropriate action to surplus items for the Kirk County Sheriff's Office.
Yes, you have the for you list of the items that the sheriff's office have that are no longer separable and need to be destroyed. So there's pants, shirts, caps, expired vest, and then a Nikon, Nikon camera or something, and Olympus voice recorder.
I move for approval. Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the surplus items for the sheriff's office. Any discussion?
Sheriff, like on these vests, they just kind of time out as far as, you know, they got a ten-year lifespan or something like that.
They have a five-year shelf life?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm going to test it after that.
Any other discussions or questions? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Then item 1.12, consider, discuss and take appropriate action to change steps for three positions in the county auditor's office for the twenty-two, twenty-three budget.
Yes. I'm respectfully requesting to change the pay steps of three positions for the two-oh, twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. Pay will remain on grade twenty-two. While this request has been tentatively approved by the district judges that set the salaries of the employees in the auditor's office, Local Government Code Section 111.013 states an increase from one fiscal year to the next in the amount budgeted for the salary of an assistant auditor shall not exceed five percent without approval of Commissioner's Board. New job descriptions, which include job title changes, additional duties, and educational requirements of a bachelor degree in accounting or finance, have been prepared. The amount of pay requested is in line with the Kirk County salary study. Two positions I'm requesting move to step seven. It will be the assistant auditor for grants and budgets. And the second position is the assistant auditor for financial reporting. One position I'm asking to move to a step four, and that is the assistant auditor for internal audits. The estimated amount requested for all three positions is less than fourteen thousand dollars. And about eight or nine thousand of this is available from the restructuring of the county, of the auditor's office because that first assistant was not hired. We went back in with just another assistant auditor. The county attorney has advised that discussion concerning specific employees be held in executive session. Thank you for your consideration.
So this is something we'll take up in executive session?
If we...
If you want to talk about an individual.
Right.
I have no interest in talking about an individual.
I don't think we need to do that either. Ms., Tanya, it might be helpful for the public to understand kind of the recent history of the auditor's office. It's been somewhat problematic and we're, we're trying to get it all shored back up.
We, the first assistant left, I spent about four months. I mean, but I think I went two months, did not receive any resumes for that position and the pay was too low. And so we actually went and hired and it was about two to three months later that I finally found somebody for the assistant auditor position. In, in the past, our job descriptions are more generic and it, each job description has almost the entire duties of the auditor's office. So this is allowing employees to become focused in the areas that per their new job titles.
But suffice it to say that the auditor's office has been shorthanded.
We have been shorthanded.
For at least a year or two.
I think it kind of goes, and this is, you know, this department's not unique. Our policy says that if you're going to bring on a new employee, they come in at step one. And that works great for new hires, for a lot of offices bringing in, you know. However, if you're trying to bring in someone with some experience, the auditor's office is one of those offices that really needs some experienced people. It's Kentucky people, fresh out of college. The policy says they have to come to court for approval. And that's what's basically happened here. We're saying that, you know, there's some jobs that you need some experience when you're hired. And I think this is not unique. I think the other departments are in the same situation and our policy says that you have to come to court. I think that in the future and for next year, I really think we need to look at going a little bit more to salary ranges. Because I think this is going to become more and more of a problem. And I think I'm talking with other counties, we're pretty unique in the way we do it. Most counties have salary ranges for positions. And I would like to look at going to that, but that's next year. So for the present, you know, I think this is, I understand the reason for it and I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve the requested changes for the three positions in the county auditor's office. Discussion. I know everybody in the county works with the auditor's office, but I dare say I probably work with the auditor's office probably more than anybody. And quite frankly, it's amazing we've done as well as we have. That's true. And I think everybody knows I'm a, I'm a penny pincher and tightwad, but this is just, this is something that we have to do for this department. It's too, it's too vital for county operations not to have it fully staffed and operational. So I'm, I'm supportive of it. Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous.
Thank you.
See, it wasn't as bad as you thought it was going to be.
Is it going to affect the today? Yeah.
Pardon?
No. It will go into affect the next budget.
Yes, the twenty-two, twenty-three budget.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, now, Ms. Shelton, if we're going to continue until we would normally break, we could, we could go over to the approval agenda and do the budget amendments and pay the bills so that we're not wasting any time here. I hate to give everybody a twenty-minute break before, because everything else is timed at ten o'clock. So I call 2.1, which are the budget amendments.
Okay. You have before you eight budget amendments. And these are all one item adjustments. There is one request for interpreters that we are using the contingency fund. This is in line with what was discussed at the last budget when we increased the contingency and, and asked certain departments and items that we know we have to have to decrease their budget and try to make it through. So that is the third one on your list.
I move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the budget, budget amendments as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, five, zero. 2.2, pay the bills.
Yes, you have invoices for your consideration that amount to six hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and four dollars and thirty-seven cents.
I move for approval. Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the bills as presented, pay the bills as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. 2.3, late bills.
There are not any.
2.4, auditor reports.
Yes, and I have two points to my auditor's report this time. And the first, we're just asking you to receive the audit, internal audit reports for the tax assessor collector, the HR department, and the IT department.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the auditor's report as presented, request as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Is that all you have?
I have one more.
Okay.
The IRS has changed the mileage reimbursement to .625, and so that begins on July 1st. It's just kind of a heads-up notice. We've also went in and looked at the meals that we're paying for people that are on counting time. Breakfast will be $13, lunch $18, and dinner $28. Those that have been traveling, and I know we're having a hard time making it on the $10 for breakfast, $12 for lunch, and $24 for dinner. So those will start July the 1st.
Do we have to take action on that?
I don't believe so.
Those are IRS guidelines, right. As much as I might like to trump them, I don't think we can.
Do we, is it part of our policy, though? And I'm not sure. I mean, I wonder if we should adopt it into our policy.
The IRS.
It would hurt. I'd make a motion that we adopt the new IRS guidelines for meals and mileage into our policy.
I'll second that. Got a motion and a second?
Perpetuity.
Until IRS changes it again.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
It's going to, so you, you mean each year or each change?
Well, whenever they change it, whenever they change it, we'll have to.
Our policy will follow the IRS's recommendation or whatever.
Would you want just that language, just to follow the IRS's recommendations instead of as of a certain date? If I can draft that and forget to get it next quarter, can you do it on an agenda?
I think that ought to be our policy.
And it could be, I'm not.
It might be.
All right, let me, I'll withdraw my motion. We'll look at it and bring it back to next meeting if we need to.
That'd be clear.
It may be there already.
If it's not, it needs to be.
I'll let y'all know if it's there, if it's not, I'll bring it to you back to the next agenda.
Okay. Then we'll move on to monthly reports.
Yes, for May 2022, auditor's report, Tanya Shelton. Animal Control Services Director Reagan Gibbons. Treasurer's payroll report, Tracy Selden. Justice of Peace Precinct 2, J.R. Cologne. I move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the monthly reports as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Court orders.
We have our court orders from our June 13th meeting, numbers 39349 to 39386. They all look to be in line. I was going to say perfect, but I said it perfect. Make motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second to approve the court orders as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Ten-minute break. Let's take a 10-minute break, and we'll start back promptly at 10 o'clock.
We'll come back to order. Sheriff?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Well, I was gonna wait till after you called. I wanted to say something before you called Chief Hamilton.
Okay.
I think he's the next one up.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and call 1.13 greeting and introduction from the interim police chief for the city of Ingram. Sheriff, if you would make the introduction.
Yeah. Okay. Judge, Commissioner, I know there's been a lot of questions in reference to Ingram, the future of Ingram. I'm glad to announce they hired a interim police chief, Joe Hamilton, he's there. Joe Hamilton used to be my captain when I was Highway Patrol in Devine. He was in San Antonio. Since his retirement, he's run several different agencies. He kind of specializes as an interim chief to go in there, analyze them, identify them, see what the wants, needs, and what you really have to have to come to move forward. What I'm happy about, my understanding is that the police department's gonna stay together and keep going. I think he's gonna make some recommendations to the city council soon, once he's ready, and then it'll be up to them to see what happens. So with that, like I said, he's my retired Highway Patrol captain, he's Joe Hamilton, the interim police chief of Ingram.
Welcome.
You said what I was gonna say. So I'm happy to be here. I retired at the end of 2016. I was lastly with Bear County Sheriff's Office, and I was over there Patrol Division as a deputy chief, but I was chief of the Patrol Division under the current U.S. Marshal, who was sheriff at the time, Susan Pamelow. And that was just like a drink from a fire hose, but I enjoy challenges.
She's the retired general, right?
Pardon?
Retired general?
Yes. Two-star. Super, super lead. In fact, I texted her last night and told her I was here now. She wished me luck, she knows some people up here, and she said she'd stop by as soon as she could and say hi. We keep in touch. We had a good team. But I retired again. I was chief in Beaverton for six years, and I enjoyed that, and that's when I got the call from her number two, which I knew he was retired from SAPD as the number two officer. And they, my wife said, "Don't do this. We live in Comal County between New Braunfels and Beaverton, and my grandkids live there." And she said, "We're not moving anywhere." And I said, "Because she'd followed me around for 45 years with DPS and the other agencies." I'm happy to be here. I like doing the interims. This is my sixth one. And we have been successful. I do an analysis, and I'm making my recommendations on what I think the city needs, not the luxury end, or not the, just somewhere in the middle. And I tell them what I think, and if they want to follow those recommendations, I think that's great. If they don't, that's okay too. But I do my best to tell them what they need, and I'm familiar with county and familiar with sheriff. I know him from a long time ago, and you got a good guy. He's gonna do good for you. But if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Glad you're here.
Yeah, I'm just glad you're here.
What is the status of the department as far as personnel right now?
Well, we have me and John Singer, and we have two other officers, and both of those are on nights. And one is going to, the sheriff stole him from me, and he's gonna go to work for him, I think, somewhere in July. The other one is going to Horseshoe Bay. They stole him, and he's going, their last day is once on Thursday and once on Friday of this week. But I visited with the sheriff earlier in the week, and temporarily, he's gonna help us out. Because John Singer just came back this morning, you probably heard, he's had COVID. And so he's been home, and he's back in the office this morning. If you go into his office, you just can't breathe. Other than that, you're fine. But we're doing okay, and we're gonna get by. And the mayor is, I like him. He's a likable guy. He's aggressive, and he wants to move forward. And I don't look backward. I don't point a finger and say, "I go forward, here's what you need to do." It's my recommendation. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Well, frankly, we're quite pleased to see you. You've become very highly recommended. I've had a good visit with the mayor, and look forward to Larry and you, your offices working together. Anything we can do to facilitate, to make things better for the citizens of Kirk County, you let us know, and we'll sit down and discuss it.
Well, I believe in that, and it's a team, and I believe strongly in a strong relationship with the community and the other agencies in the county. I appreciate the opportunity. I don't anticipate, some take five weeks. I've been in, you may have heard, Atlanta.
Yeah.
And some issues they had a few years ago. I was there nine months to help. And that was, again, like drinking from a fire hose, but we got it leveled out. We hired a retired lieutenant, homicide lieutenant from Dallas, and it's running, running smooth. But I'd like that, I need to get back to my second job, which is the backup babysitter for my grandkids, my three grandson, he has five, three, and one and a half. And my wife's got them today, and I'm also the feeder of the chickens, and I get their eggs in the evening. Thank you, thank you very much.
Well, our door's open if you need anything.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. That's a relief.
Yes. Good thing.
Item 1.14, discussion of current Kirk County subdivision rules and regulations regarding lot size and water requirements. Commissioner Letts.
I put this on the agenda after busy with a couple of other people in the community, and also in light of some actions taken by Headwaters recently to increase lot size for drilling the well eastern part of the county. And I just want to make it, you know, and at the same time, we have some items on the agenda today, and we probably will have in the next couple of months, that are in conflict potentially with those new rules. In overview, Headwaters deals with water, we deal with development, and there's certainly an interaction, and we've always worked, and I think we'll continue to work very closely to have the two rules very much in sync, which is easier, but at the moment, they are a little bit out of sync. We, our rules, and they're not gonna change probably for the next two months or so, require for a minimum lot size of seven to five acres. We have to approve those. We don't really have an option. We business with county attorney. You know, our rules, we have to approve a subdivision that comes through. If they're in that new area where Headwaters require seven acres, there's obviously a conflict there. Hopefully, these developers will go and work with Headwaters too, but, you know, we can't control that part of it. But I just wanted to be clear that there is a little bit of an issue there, and I would strongly recommend that any developers, before they come with us for a plat, to go to Headwaters and talk about water. There's some recent ones that have come up that I've been involved with, and that's what we said. And we said, "Talk to Headwaters." They said, "You know, we have no control over water at the county commissioners board." I just wanted to make that clear, because there is gonna be a little bit of a conflict for probably a couple of months, and hopefully, I think we can work, that'll be worked out in our new rules. Another thing is, just a philosophy that seems to be going a little bit by the wayside. When we wrote our current rules, the feeling was that, from a water standpoint alone, developments or homes on a public water system were probably better than individual wells drilled and lots. I'm talking more not ranches, I'm talking about, you know, five acres, seven acres, whatever, 10 acres. And the reason is, and I wrote it down, is that, you know, if you're on a public water system, going into the current Headwaters rules, it comes out to 432 gallons per day per connection, and that comes out to 157,000 gallons per year. That water use is metered. The consumer pays for it, which, you know, most people will be concerned about that. During a drought, there's water restrictions that are imposed by the water utility, and the wells are monitored both by TCQ and Headwaters. If you go with an individual exempt well, like most of these wells are that are drilled in the smaller end of subdivisions, they can use up to 24,480 gallons per day based on the exempt requirements, and that comes up to a little over, almost 9 million gallons a year. Now, very few, hopefully none, use that much. They use a fraction of it, maybe 10% of it, whatever the amount. But the issue is, they are probably using more water on average than the smaller lots on water systems. Another thing that comes up with that, that water use is not metered coming out of those exempt, up to the 9 million gallons anyway. After the well is drilled, there's no cost for that water, so there's really not a real strong incentive to be conservative. During a drought, they're on our system, and there's really no well monitoring. It's done by the individual. So based on that, the court came up with a, what was called a high-density development areas, that we were encouraging people, you know, primarily in Center Point area, Comfort area, and Ingram area, you know, we thought, yeah, a little bit of an incentive to hook up to a water system or start your own water system. We thought that was, from a water standpoint alone, was probably the best way to go. I don't know that our, you know, we're rewriting our rules now. I'm just bringing this up, at least, we were thinking about this. State law changed, interpretation of state law has changed, and we can't talk about lot sizes up here anymore. So all of a sudden, this area has become a lot grayer from what we can do at the county. Headwaters, you know, their rules are their rules, and they're in charge of the water, and I'm totally supportive of that. But I think it's something that we just need to think about. As we're going through, public water systems are not bad. They're good, they use less water overall. I think that we ought to, need to remember that. I don't know if we can incorporate it in our new rules or not. I talked to D. Williams at length about that. In fact, I think he agrees with what I'm saying, but how they do it, you know, it's a little bit, it's difficult too. So I'm just bringing it up as an issue, and I did an example, just a, I used 140 acre development potential water use. I did it, 140 acres, because that's, I can do the math easier there. Simple minds here. You know, if you have individual wells, whether you're on seven acres, you have 20 lots, if you're five acre lot sizes, you're 28 lots, you're gonna use potentially up to 400, almost 490,000 gallons per day to 685,000 gallons a day. That's the amount that's allocated. Doesn't mean they're gonna use it, they probably won't, but that's how much is allocated. If you're on a public water system on that same acre, and you go with the current rules that we have, that would create 70 lots, and that's 30,240 gallons a day. I mean, any way you look at it, going on a public water system, you're gonna use less water per connection, probably for that area. And it's something to remember. And I brought it up today, this is, we're continuing to work on our subdivision rules. There was a change at Headwaters, which does impact what we're gonna look at probably today later on and other, and this is, you know, we need to continue to work, the developers especially, need to work with Headwaters, because that's the reason, if we approve a plat over here, it doesn't mean that they're gonna get the water, and those individuals are not gonna get the well permits potentially on five acre lot size.
Well, I don't see why we can't do with this what we just discussed with the IRS. It's subject to, and we went down this road, we got real close to saying what we do is subject to what Headwaters groundwater allows. And we can have regions in the county where it is in compliance with what Headwaters has already recommended, or not just recommended, but requires. We can follow along with that, the same as we, our policy can be the same with that, like the IRS thing we discussed earlier. So that in a certain region, whatever they just, West Kirk County could change easily in the future too, so that it would be reflective of what Headwaters does. That would be my recommendation, and it keeps it simple. And then somebody doesn't say, "Well, I gotta prove for this, now I gotta go talk to them," or "Not approve." But I've sat down, and we've got all of our lot sizes figured out at 5.21 acres, now you tell me I gotta go to seven. And that changes, that ripple effect later on, when you're gonna convey property to family members and all these other things that we see in here. So I would say, we don't have to be in, that we should stay as close to lockstep with Headwaters as we possibly can, just to eliminate confusion, expense, aggravation with taxpayers in the future. And I don't see why we can't have regions. They have regions, we should, we should stick with them. We got really close to just saying, whatever they say, that's the rule in the future.
My purpose is not to talk about our current rules, because those are done in the executive session.
I know that.
I'm just trying to.
I think everybody here knows, and we've talked about this openly, that we were gonna follow along with basically Headwaters, so that it eliminates confusion. And I'm not trying to talk out of, out of turn.
I'd like to weigh in. I think it's important that the public, I'm looking at a couple of board members over here from Headwaters, they're friends, and I want to clarify so the public understands how we work together. We're a little bit like the branches of the armed forces. One's the Army and one's the Navy, but we're both are representing the same people, and we're on the same team. But they have, we, what we do at the county is we do plating. That's the function that we perform. What they do is permitting. They permit the water wells, the drill, permits to drill the wells, and how much water you can withdraw from those wells. Everything that we do is dependent upon water availability. It may be unsaid, but it is the reality of existence in Texas today. We can't develop, no need in putting out, developing a subdivision if you don't have the water to be able to service it. And so one of the things that we've talked about in the process of revising our rules, and we're actively, we're probably about a year into the revision process, getting ready hopefully to get them finalized here within the next couple of months, and we've worked closely with Headwaters on that. So the right hand knows what the left hand is doing. You know, if you're gonna send the Navy one direction and the Army the other direction, you're not gonna win a battle. So you're gonna have to coordinate. And that's what we're really trying to do here. And all of this stuff, while we were in the process of trying to revise the rules, Headwaters revised some of their rules, and that's fine. And one of the things we've been talking about in our revised rules is we want to get the Headwaters to sign off on the plating process, so that they're aware of what we're doing, and be a little bit more transparent with each other. And as far as our plating goes, we're telling developers, I've got engineers sitting in the back of the room, that we're gonna talk about, talk with later this morning, you need to go talk to Headwaters. We don't control that permitting, we just control the plating. And so that's what we're trying to clarify, so this is really an information point, so that they know what we're doing, we understand what they're doing, the public understands how we're working together, trying to benefit citizens of Kirk County. So, welcome.
Do we have any other discussion on this one?
No.
I've got them on my speed dial, so. We'll move on to the next item, which is item 1.15. It's a public hearing for revision of plat for RH Ranch Lot 9. This is a public hearing, I'm convening it. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on item 1.15, which is a public hearing for the RH Ranch Lot 9 plat revision?
Judge, before anyone speaks, just at the point of the clarification, when this item was originally brought to us, and we asked for the public hearing to be set, if you look at our memo that we have in here, it reflects that there's only two lots that they're proposing, but they actually are proposing three. So three lots, they're proposing Lot 9A would be 12.62 acres, Lot 9B would be 12.61 acres, and Lot 9C will be 25.17 acres. Frontage on all three of the lots still remains on Byers Springs Road. I just wanted to clarify that, that it did change from the first original submittal, which was in compliance with our regulations, and now this second submittal is still in compliance with the regulations. Very large lots, shouldn't be any issues, but I just wanted to clarify that. That is what the application is right now.
Is there anyone who would like to address the court in this public meeting? There being none, then we will adjourn the public meeting and move on to item 1.16, which is a public hearing for revision of plat for Falling Waters Lots 102 and 103. Is there anyone that would like to address the court with regard to the revision of plat for Falling Water Lots 102 and 103? There being none, then we will adjourn that public meeting and move on to item 1.17. Consider, discuss, and take appropriate action for the court to approve a revision of plat for Falling Water Lots 102 and 103. Mr. Hastings.
Thank you, Judge. This proposal combines Lot 102, currently 3.14 acres, and Lot 103, currently 6.47 acres, into Lot 102R, 9.61 acres. The road frontage will remain on Staler Springs Lane. County engineer requests the court approve a revision of plat for Falling Water Lots 102 and 103, volume 7, page 75 through 76, Precinct 4.
Move for approval, put Steeler.
Thank you for, I was gonna try to pronounce that.
Steeler?
Steeler.
Adolf Steeler.
Who was the second on that?
Hey.
Harley? So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There being none?
Wait, is there a second?
No, I second you, you made the.
Okay. Oh, I thought you were, we're good. I was thinking about.
He moved, right?
Yeah, okay.
You seconded it. We're legal. We're having a discussion.
I was thinking about Adolf.
I was too. I didn't even hear what he called him. I was looking at.
Steeler, I said Steeler.
You said Steeler?
I didn't, but.
Okay, back on track. Any discussion on this topic? There those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, fine as ever. Moving on to item 1.18, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to set a public hearing for August the 8th, 2022, at 10:00 a.m., to consider a petition to abandon, vacate, and discontinue an approximately 900-foot portion of Stewart Junkin Road. Said road to be replaced with a different alignment approximately 150 feet east of its current intersection with River Road and Precinct 4. Mr. Hastings.
Attached is a petition prepared for Lee and Jan Lehman, requesting the court abandon, vacate, and discontinue an approximately 900-foot portion of Stewart Junkin Road, said road to be replaced with a different alignment approximately 150 feet east of its current intersection with River Road, as depicted in Exhibits A and B in that petition. According to Texas statutes, the court may order public roads laid out, discontinued, closed, abandoned, vacated, or altered. The statute defines the relevant terms that we're talking about here. Abandon is to relinquish the public's right-of-way and, and use of the road. Vacate is to terminate the existence of the road by direct action of the Commissioners' Court of the county. And discontinue, to discontinue the maintenance of the road. The statute defines the process to abandon, vacate, and discontinue as follows. Number one, prepare a petition with eight signatures from people who live in the precinct. The petition must show the limits of the road that is to be abandoned and discontinued. The petition must be posted at both ends of the subject portion of the road as well as the courthouse for a minimum of 20 days prior to the public hearing. Number two, a public hearing is required before the Commissioners' Court can consider the petition. And number three, following the public hearing, the Commissioners' Court may consider and take action on the subject request. So this is the process to this. Today, we're here before the court presenting that petition and asking that a public hearing be set. The county engineer recommends that the court set a public hearing for August the 8th, 2022, at 10:00 a.m., to consider a petition to abandon, vacate, and discontinue an approximately 900-foot portion of Stewart Junkin Road, said road to be replaced with a different alignment approximately 150 feet east of its current intersection with River Road. This is Precinct 4.
I move for approval.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve the petition to abandon, vacate, to set a public hearing based on the petition to abandon, vacate, and discontinue the, that 900-foot portion of Stewart Junkin Road. Any discussion?
Charlie, all the, the construction costs of all this are private, and it results in a public road?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes.
Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous? Moving on to item 1.19, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action for the court to set a public hearing for 10:00 a.m. on August the 8th for revision of plat for Post Oak Estates Lot 7 and Water Works Lot. Charlie Hastings.
This proposal combines Lot 7, currently 0.6 acres, and the adjacent Water Works Lot, currently 0.17 acres. Road frontage will remain on Goat Creek Cut Off. The existing lot is 0.6 acres. This property is in Kerrville's ETJ, and it will require approval from both Kirk County and the city of Kerrville. The county engineer requests the court set a public hearing for 10:00 a.m. on August the 8th, 2022, for a revision of plat for Post Oak Estates Lot 7 and Water Works Lot, volume 3, page 47, Precinct 4. I have been in communication with Aqua Texas, they're the water provider there. Make sure that they got a copy of this plat. They should have it already from the routing slip, but to bring to light, there's a lot on here that's labeled as Water Works Lot. And I believe the issue is that there is a well on there, a tank, and it's private, and the pump keeps burning up. And so he's already connected to Aqua Texas. But Aqua Texas and anyone else has a right to look at this, and we need a public hearing so we can flesh that out in case somebody has rights to that lot before this happens.
Okay. I move for approval.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Set a public hearing for 10:00 a.m. on August the 8th for revision of plat for Post Oak Estates Lot 7 and Water Works Lot. Any discussion?
Question. Charlie?
Yes, sir.
What is the, is the right-of-way issue, or why is this not, why are we not just waiving our authority and giving it to the city of Kerrville? Why are we? Why are we...
We maintain Goat Creek Cut Off road, and we will need some, a little bit of right-of-way dedicated to get it up to our standards.
That's what I thought, that's what I wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Moving on to item 1.20. Consider discuss and take appropriate action for the court to set a public hearing for 10:00 a.m. on August the 8th, 2022, for revision of plat for the reserve at Falling Water Lots 31R1 and 31R2. Mr. Hastings.
This proposal combines lots 31R1 and 31R2. They're currently 6.2 acres each, and they would combine them into Lot 31R3. That's revision 3. 12.4 acres. Road frontage will remain on Painted Sky. County engineer requests the court set a public hearing for 10:00 a.m. on August the 8th, 2022, for revision of plat for the reserve at Falling Water Lots 31R1, 31R2, plat file 18-06888, Precinct 4.
Move for approval. Second.
A motion and a second to set a public hearing for August the 8th at 10:00 a.m. for revision of plat for reserve at Falling Waters Lots 31R1 and 31R2. Any discussion? Lots of public meetings on the 8th. Those in favor, raise your hand. Next is item 1.21. Consider discuss and take appropriate action for the court to conditionally approve a final plat for Steel Creek Estates, subject to submittal of a satisfactory performance financial guarantee and placement of a note on the plat regarding the water of Bagel Hill. Charlie Hastings.
Thank you, Judge. I have Mike Welborn here, who's representing the developer for this subdivision, and he just visited with me just a few moments ago, and he wanted to ask if this item needs approval. Would you flesh that out for us, Mike?
Sure. Mike Welborn, 631 Water Street, Kerrville, Texas. So I did talk to the developer. He's been out of town since this whole limited plat was presented to you. Just got back and talked to him on the way over here. And so we're going to ask to pull this plat and visit with headwaters to see if there's options going five acres or we can even modify it to the seven acres. Pretty much the plan is to stay the same either scenario with the lot sizes.
Well, we think that's very prudent, and we appreciate what you're doing. It's not lost on us that you're trying to follow the rules here and do this the right way. We're trying to get, like I said, trying to get our army and our navy to coordinate here. Let's get it done.
Yes, sir. We've actually already started as many steps with headwaters to ask for something back. Just kind of like to know what the process is. We haven't defined it yet, whether the person is dismitted to and what we need to move forward.
But I think you know, and your fellow engineers know, that we are going to require that y'all comply with whatever your rules are.
That'd be...
They're not our rules.
I agree.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move over to the information agenda. 3.1 would be status reports from department heads. Not being none, we'll move on to 3.2. Status reports from elected officials. Sheriff?
I just wanted to share with the court and you, Judge, I know you've been involved in different events with Mercy Gate Ministries. The sheriff's office, Kerrville Police Department, human police department participated in a fundraiser, the Guns and Hoses football game Friday. I just want to let you all know and the public know, we raised over $15,000. And the good news is the guns won, the police won. That's one of the reasons I came up to it. Anyway, it was a real good event, it took good calls.
Very good. Always good to see the teams work together.
Yeah.
Any other elected officials? Okay, moving on to 3.3, which is the status reports from liaison commissioners. Anything?
I have nothing.
I think we beat the fireworks to death. Everybody knows to be careful, right? Okay. Executive session, do we have anything in the executive session we're going to cover today?
Yes.
Okay. Let's take a five-minute break, and we'll reconvene in the executive session.
93 we have no further business, we're adjourned.
93 we have no further business, we're adjourned.